Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody could please silence your electronic devices as needed, it would be greatly appreciated if there's anyone here for a requirement for a class. Your paperwork can be signed at the end of the meeting by any of the by any of the sitting trustees here at the table. Thank you very much. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Ms. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one addition. I'd like to add action item T-19 to read as follows. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby authorizes and directs Gersio and Gersio LLP as General Counsel for the District to appeal the decision and order issued by impartial hearing officer Michael Lazen dated February 27, 2024, in the impartial hearing brought by the parent of the student identified on confidential Schedule A, SED case number 594988, the State Review Officer.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Motion to adopt the agenda amended made by Ms. Greco, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Approval draft minutes, March 7, 2014. Motion by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Unfortunately, this evening, our student board members were not able to attend the meeting. So we'll have to catch up with them at the next scheduled meeting, which I believe is April 16. My first meeting next month is postponed due to the spring break. Moving on to presentations. So we do have a few presentations this evening, one of which is Board Awards. Every so often, staff students of the district kind of go above and beyond and get nominated for Board Awards, and we do have a couple different sections of Board Awards this evening. The first one, the nominees, Michelle Rosenstein and Anna Nunevero, nominated by Dr. Gary Furman. Michelle and Anna acted calmly and professionally to address a serious medical condition with a staff member. Both Michelle and Anna were able to calm the staff member while administering medical interventions. Their quick-thinking actions in calling 911 were instrumental in getting the staff member the urgent medical procedures which prevented life-threatening circumstance. Michelle and Anna deserve recognition for their tremendous efforts, medical care of the staff member. And the Board would like to recognize Michelle and Anna for their due diligence, and we appreciate their efforts on that. So not once, but twice, we had staff step up to help the Monticello Central School District community. Alex Lingowski, Ryan Jasper, and John Marinzana, nominated by Dr. Gary Furman. In times of need, ordinary people take extraordinary actions for the betterment of others. Such compassion and willingness to help others is commendable. On January 6, three people came together to support the needs of a student, alerting others of the situation and being there for the student to meet the needs of the student, to monitor the student, and to comfort the student in need. The quick action of these three individuals kept the student from additional injuries. Alex Lingowski, Ryan Jasper, and John Marinzana are hereby recognized for their quick responsiveness to attend to the needs of a student, very much in their need of support. These three individuals working as a team exemplified Monty Pride. Thank you very much for that. So moving on, we have another presentation, which I'm sure will be just as riveting. Our budget presentation.
I'll turn this over to Lisa.
Okay, I can't see the screen, so I don't know if the presentation's up there or not.
Nope.
Well, it's coming up. This evening, we have our final individual presentation from departments. This evening is curriculum and staff development, pupil personnel services, summer programs, BOSEs, general support, benefits, district-wide expenditures, and staffing. So it's a big one. Okay, next slide, please. So first up this evening is curriculum and staff development, and Mrs. Carlin will present.
Good evening, everyone. So you'll notice, I won't go through line by line. We really tried to keep everything, or at least our overall budget, exactly the same. What we did was we moved some lines around. When we eliminated the Director of Special Programs this summer and replaced that with the Director of Student Services, we no longer needed the special program line, so a lot of the curriculum and instructional budget had lines specific to special programs. So we're kind of condensing those. So you'll notice on some of the lines, so for example, the first line of purchase services, from last year's adopted budget for that line to this current year, it was increased. But that's through a transfer by closing out a line for special programs that you'll see later on. So we're not eliminating anything. We're really just kind of condensing, because when we were using that special programs line this year, we had to do budget transfers, so we kind of were already doing it, but this makes it a little bit cleaner. So you'll notice if you go through each one of the lines, any increases really are just a transfer from the special programs lines. And then you'll notice on the second page, we've eliminated the special program lines completely. So the overall the overall total at the end, we're going, we, last year had 606,655. This year, we're looking for 592,65. So we've actually lowered our budget from this current year to next year. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Okay, next slide. Next up is pupil personnel services, and here's Michelle.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I don't know that mine will be taken with such grace as Teresa's. PPS does have an increase in our overall budget for the coming school year. One of the things we were actually able to decrease was the cost for contractual services for PT. We have been able to secure another PT for the district, so we won't be in need of contracting out for any of those services. The next thing that we did go up in quite significantly is our cost of our out-of-district and BOSEs, not BOSEs, but out-of-district placements. That's a direct impact from our inability to place students locally at Sullivan BOSEs. We've had to go further out to Rockland County, up to Dutchess County, Poughkeepsie, and more significantly over to Center for Discovery with the new partnership that they had with Sullivan BOSEs to place students there at an increased cost for the coming year. All debatable, which is the positive side for those placements. I have a minor increase for mileage due to attendance officer positions, which we have two. For them to, they're going to be working 11 months now instead of 10 months, so they'll be working in the summer. So that's to provide more assistance to our students, especially those coming for summer school, summer programming. A slight increase for the district RN. She's traveling a lot between the buildings to cover as needed when another RN is out or the need demands at a building, so that was a slight increase. Also for attendance for our RNs, we have a bunch of new RNs, so attendance for them to go to an annual conference, which is important for their professional development and learning the things that are different from being a clinical nurse at a hospital or another type of facility to being a school nurse. We have thankfully some new psychologists in the district, so that's another slight increase. I'm looking to get some PD for them, some more targeted PDs. Again, they were in private practice or more clinical, and now are here for our school psychology, so they need a little bit of training for that. And the last one that's an increase is our conference attendance for our social workers. It's a large part of what they do here. Large part of helping our students and our community. So we would like to continue to support their ability to attend their annual conference and earn their CEUs for the district. Questions?
Yeah, you talked about professional development for the social workers and psychologists. What do they need different than they don't have right now? Do they have to do, you said something like they're coming from private into now the public schools. Are they taking some of their their experience of that as far as saying, hey, this is how we build things? Is that how, is that what you're talking about, professional development?
So the social workers, to keep their license, have to have a certain amount of CEUs every three years. So this conference, the annual conference that they go to, gets them a large chunk of those credits that they need to keep the license, and their licenses are how we bill Medicaid for reimbursement off of their certification.
So the school still does that? Does professional development isn't for them to figure out how to do the billing? No, okay, I just want to go to her.
I don't see on here where we have our speech, I'm sorry. A speech increase for on the St. John Street for the little ones. I don't see speech on here. Is that a related service that's built in somewhere? The speechologist?
The position?
Yeah.
So that was already put into this year, so I didn't add it in for next year? Because it was a position that we posted this year, so if that was something I missed, then.
Speech services for the preschool is billed through the special aid fund and 4410 program, so it's not part of the general fund expense.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When there's more special ed teachers hired, that change any of the numbers here, but not really?
Probably not. The amount of our students has increased. So most likely not.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more quick question. The attendance officers that are going to be 11 months, they're going to be doing home visits?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, the next slide, it says summer school and special programs, it should just say summer school, and part of that was already put in the curriculum and instructional budget, so this is a repeat, so let's just skip over this one. Next, we have BOSE services. So we went through our BOSE services pretty much. So we looked at it in detail this year, probably more critically than we have in the past. One of the first levels that's increasing is the central business office. That's a number they gave us for everything they do for accounts payable payroll for the district. We go down a little farther. Sorry. Recruitment. I'm just going to talk really loud. So the next slide we're reducing is recruitment. We used to use BOSEs to place advertisements for positions that were available. We're doing that in-house now. The next thing is the EDOC access, that's our microfilm and access through Orange Ulster for records that they retain for us, and we don't have a need to do microfilming next year, so we're reducing that. Public information. We have a service through CAP region BOSEs that we are reducing for next school year. The HVAC electrician, a couple of board meetings ago, the board actually approved a bid that some BOSEs did. They don't have an HVAC or electrician currently, so if we need that service, we will contract it. We would only contract for an electrician, because we do have a couple of staff members that are licensed HVAC technicians. Administrative and debt service comes directly from BOSEs. Those went up, and they'll present that if you go to their annual meeting. School improvement went down a little bit. Staff development pretty much stayed the same. Next slide. Arts and education. We reduced that down to what we currently are spending. We increased it a couple of years ago, but looking at it critically, we decided that if that's what we've been spending for the last couple of years, that's what we're going to budget. Arts are alt-high school, alt-education high school. We always budget for a few extra seats. This year, we have fewer kids going, so we reduced it a little bit. The rest of those stayed pretty much the same, and then we'll get to special education as Ms. McCoy spoke about with the private placements, because Sullivan BOSEs doesn't have the ability to place all of our kids. We're reducing the budget here to offset the increase on the PPS side. And the rest of them, if they went down, it was really based on what we're currently spending. Next slide. Career and technical education, that went up. That's based truly just on the tuition rate increase from BOSEs. Career opportunity, that is, one student is attending a program at Orange Ulster BOSEs. Last year, we budgeted for a couple more, but we only have one for next year. And I think the rest is pretty much the same. So overall, the BOSEs budget is going down about $2 million. Any questions on BOSEs?
So when PPS went up a million, we're taking a million out of the BOSEs to cover that million?
Do we pay for seats at BOSEs that we don't? Isn't the budget a certain amount of seats, even if we can't place our children at BOSEs?
So the way BOSEs works for special education, we provide them with what they call the Final Service Request at the end of April, and we tell them how many seats we anticipate needing. They build their budget or whatever based on their program, based on those from all districts. And then on bed stay, they look at the number, and they'll bill us based on the Final Service Request or the bed stay number, which is in October, whichever one is higher. So if our number goes up on bed stay, because we only request four seats and we're sending five, they'll bill us for five. If we requested five and we only have four going, they will continue to bill us for five until around January. It's been historically that I meet with them and then go over those numbers and ask them to either reduce it or keep it the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the BOSEs budget on our side? Thank you very much, Lisa.
I get to do the next one, too. General support and distributive. This is our general administration central office, Board of Education. This budget actually went up a little bit, mainly due to us increasing the additional SRO and security costs for the armed security. And it's reflected in this budget, this line, in the instructional line on the 2425 budget, where last year it was kind of an after-the-fact thing, and it came from another line. We did a budget transfer to cover it. But pretty much everything else stayed the same. Central printing and mailing, BOSEs. We leased copiers from BOSEs. As they expired, we moved off of the BOSE service, went to the omnia contract. We're leasing our copiers now through the Crisp Company, so we have local maintenance as opposed to falling and waiting days to get service, so that has gone up a little bit. A lot of those contracts had expired, and we were only paying maintenance on them. So now we're paying a lease. There are any questions on general support of the district? The next to last slide is employee benefits. This is for all employees. These numbers are generally like outside our control. This is our district contribution to the employees' retirement system for non-instructional employees, teachers' retirement system for instructional employees, social security, our workers' comp premium, health insurance, that's going up. It went up 12% for 2024. I'm anticipating it's going to go up similarly, but since that premium changes in January, it's only a slight increase. And union welfare is for our local 74 employees, plan operations, cafeteria, and bus drivers, and a lot of others. Questions on benefits? And finally, we have debt service. This one looks, there's a lot of movement on this one. The serial bond principal and interest increase, that's because of our $54 million project at the high school. As you recall, we were doing bond anticipation notes as we were funding that project. We converted them to serial bonds this past year. So the bond anticipation note number went down to zero, and the serial bond number went up. Energy performance contract. That changes year to year. It's pretty consistent. We had a lease of some fitness equipment for this current year, and it's paid off, so those numbers went away. The leases, principal and interest is for the Jefferson Street Building. I know this is real exciting stuff, but Gatsby something, I can't remember the number, 75 or one of them. The Government Accounting Standards Board requires that we record leases of properties differently than we used to. We used to just report it as a contractual expense in the District Office Code. Last year, they said, no, you have to report those separately as leases, so that's why that's down there. Transfer to special aid fund, that generally covers the district's contribution for special ed summer school placements. And we budget $100,000 transferred to capital, so that if there's minor repairs, we could do those without having a football building project. Any questions on debt service? Personnel. So there are a few things that we did around personnel in this budget. There are four vacant special education positions that are included in this budget. There are some retirements that are not included in this budget. And there are some vacant positions that are not included in this budget. We met with each of the principals and went over all of these. These are their recommendations for staffing needs. There was a request for an additional ENL teacher. That has not been reflected in this budget yet. We're still waiting on some data to determine if that's the case.
Before we, as we talk about the retirements not included, before this moving forward, I would like to know the current numbers of the class sizes for these disciplines?
The next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we plan on eliminating a guidance counselor position?
So we were going to eliminate, we're not going to fill the retirement last year, but people lobbied, and we decided to fill it for this current year, knowing that we had another retirement coming up, and so we're not filling that one. We had two back-to-back, and we're not going to fill one of them.
Do you think that our guidance department can survive without filling that one slot?
Yes, it can. So I want to talk about this briefly, because I know it's a difficult budget year. It's a difficult budget year for us. Given the reduction in foundation aid that we're experiencing, and given the signals that the governor is sending, which is because of declining enrollment and what she believes that school districts have in their reserves and fund balances, we expect continuous declines in foundation aid in the upcoming years. Now, the bright news out of Albany this week is that the state legislatures did put out their proposed budgets that would result if adopted. What they're proposing is to get every school district back to hold harmless, which is a flat zero, and then increase state aid by 3% more. Now, unless and until that happens, we really have to, you know, keep in mind and play with what we think is a realistic number, which is the hold harmless number. In other words, foundation aid is flat from last year. Okay? So with a, what that equates to on our cost-driven aids is really a 0.44% overall increase in state aid. And when you compare that with Consumer Price Index and inflation, which is around 4%, and our contractual increases, already you can notice that there is a gap there. So to give you some context, before we get any deeper on some of these requests in terms of personnel, if we include the hold harmless number, which is again, flat on state aid, and if this proposal goes through, this proposed budget is about $100.4 million. If our state aid remains flat, and we increase the tax levy by a number of, I'm going to throw a number out there, I'm not recommending it at this point. This is something the Board Budget Committee will have to wrestle with, but let's say we increase the tax levy by 2.9%. We would still have a budget shortfall of about $732,600. So those are the types of numbers that we're dealing with, and that would include, on the previous slide, Reggie, those cuts to personnel. One of the things that we are unfortunately considering would be to eliminate the alternative high school program at St. John Street. Those staff members there would be moving into positions, most likely at the high school at this point, and they would be filling those positions that you see eliminated through attrition. So what I can present to you now is a budget that has no layoffs in it. So anyone who is working presently for the district will be having their jobs next year. We're confident that we can deliver a budget that way. However, when retirements do present themselves, or people leave the district, we are requiring our administrators, and I shared this with the Board at the last meeting, to present a rationale on why that position needs to be kept. And if you can go to the next slide, please, Reggie. We have had a 9.5% decline in enrollment since We have had a nine and a half percent decline in enrollment since 2016, 17, 18. And I think to your point, Ms. LaRue, so I think you raise a valid question about, you know, the needs of students. Certainly, they have increased since the pandemic. You know, we're not going to refute that. However, the economic reality that we're forced to deal with, given the cut to foundation aid is, how do we make all of this work efficiently? And as opportunities for attrition present themselves, we are scrutinizing them to see, are there better ways or more efficient ways that we can do this? So back to the St. John Street alternative high school, we would be seeking ways to include that program at the high school. So those students would be continue, continue to get some, you know, particular support for them. It's not just throwing them back into the the regular population, just back and go. But we are looking for ways to consolidate services, given this new economic reality that we face.
Ashley.
Yeah, the alternative program. It started off with maybe 25 students at the beginning of the year or maybe at the end of last year. I just remember there was something like 25 and we're hoping to get more in there. Is it still at that level or is there less students in there?
I believe it's.
I don't know the status.
I don't.
It's a few less than that. We started out, but we've lost a couple for various moving out of the district or.
So there's roughly like 22 that'll graduate this June?
Well, I don't know, they're all graduates.
Yeah, I don't know if they're all seniors.
22 students in the program. It's a nine and 12.
So do you know how many offhand are seniors?
Five.
Just curious, because there was a lot said about how it was working so well. I'm just curious as to know, and now it's shutting its doors and it's coming over for budget reasons, you're saying?
Correct, yeah, strictly financial reasons. It's not due to the quality of the program. It's not due to, you know, the efforts of the staff there are commendable. It's really trying to find ways in this budget to make the numbers balance.
Helen had a question.
I would just add significant concern about reducing these positions from retirement due to knowing the current class sizes that are in the high school in some of these areas. Because, I mean, we all have students in the school and we know what they come home with. With, you have to split a class into two, you have this many kids in the class. It just, I think that this really would need to be looked at and have more numbers to back that for me.
So we have looked at class sizes and we have met with principals regarding class sizes. And we believe that, you know, these positions are not needed to be filled in order to still have reasonable class sizes. Are some class sizes going to be bigger than others? Yes.
What's reasonable for a class size?
Well, it depends on the level. I would say at the high school, anywhere from 20 to 30, and I believe the contract provides for that.
So in our, as we talk about from the pandemic and the needs of our students, as a parent and as a board member, a 25 to a 30 count student in ELA is crazy. I mean, from a parent perspective.
Okay.
That's how I feel. I don't know how anybody else feels.
I agree.
If if the board budget committee can act on and determine whether or not these positions could be added to back into the budget. But what we're sharing with you tonight is a budget that has these positions not being filled, increasing taxes by 2.9% and still having a $732,000 shortfall. Now, if the board wants to increase the budget to to include these positions, we can come back to you with numbers as to how much that would cost. But right now, if we're playing with hold harmless and, you know, looking at the tax levy cap, which would actually be 3.7%, but I don't think any of us feel that that's a good number to go out with. This, these are the types of numbers that we have to balance.
I would just like, like I said, additional detail for the number of classes in the high school and what their current class size is.
And we can have that for you Monday night at the budget committee.
And you had already stated, some of these would be taken by if St. John Street, if the alternative school went away, just two ELA teachers.
One of them would be coming from.
One of them would, so really those aren't included, but you'd only be losing technically one.
So in essence, one of those ELA positions would be filled by a teacher from St. John Street. The guidance position would be filled from a counselor from St. John Street. The math position would be filled by a teacher from St. John Street. The social studies teacher would be filled by a position from St. John Street. The vacant position, not included in science, would be filled by a teacher from St. John Street. And the Spanish position at the high school, because of class sizes being what they are, we determined that that's no longer necessary. So I look at class sizes and course enrollments. And these are what we think can be done with reasonable class sizes within the confines of what the contract, the teacher's contract caps in terms of class sizes.
You're looking at current class size, so now I'm moving students from the alt ed back into classrooms? That that is going to be in this or they're in separate? Because if you're talking about 25 to 30 current students, now I have to add another 25 in. No, it's not, you know, 25 into one class, but you're adding another one or two into each of these classes.
Well, not necessarily. We would look for ways to try to preserve that program within the high school.
You would still need teachers for the program, so you wouldn't be taking all the teachers, putting them back into here?
Not their entire schedules, no. But most of their, you know, most of their schedule, probably yes. So that's to be determined. So what we are trying to do is to maintain that level of service for those students.
So we'll just have the information for the budget meeting.
You'll have more, yeah, you'll have more specific information than this. But I can assure you that class sizes were looked at. They were compared with best practice, they were compared with the contract. I think we all recognize that, you know, continued and sustained funding to support students post pandemic is still needed. But those revenue streams have dried up. There's no more federal relief money. The governor has proposed a budget that cuts state aid. So that means it's either coming out of the taxpayers or our reserves to balance it.
I've got a question. I'll put in my roundtable comment.
The pre-K would stay the way it is.
Yeah, pre-K is.
Yeah, what about the principal of pre-K for the pre-K program?
Yeah, there's still be a principal needed in that building. But what, in moving the alt high school out, we would probably move the assistant, the assistant principal director of security to another building. Still continue with the security detail, but provide support as well.
Ashley.
The grant program director that spends most of his time over at St. John Street, is he going to then gain office in the high school or does he not have an office?
I don't think that's been determined yet.
Okay.
He runs a grant that's kind of, he does a lot to support the St. John Street program. But his grant is district wide.
Okay, so he wouldn't necessarily have an office within the high school. That's that's to be determined.
That, yeah, there's no.
But not the center office, there's not a central office spot for him. It's more like in the high school.
We don't, there's no cost benefit or savings to moving him to a different building. So we haven't really explored that.
Any other questions regarding the budget presentation? Good?
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, oh, you got it now?
Yeah, I got it now. The the one thing that I wanted to say was that I, as I understand it, our plan was eviscerated by the governor. And I would commend it on balancing with the decrease in the number of students. And then the upcycling of the staff. Thank you, because it's not, it's getting back to ugly times in education. So I do appreciate the time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Groden. Reggie, could you go to the next slide, please? So in this slide kind of gives more detail of what the, I'm sorry, Lisa, if you're going to talk about. You know, kind of enrollment trends to come. And you do see some leveling up in the elementary grades. But, you know, if you look at Kaiser Middle School, for example, there's a pretty significant decline there. And those are students who are moving up into the high school over the next several years. So it's both, you know, reduction in state aid and also keeping in mind what the actual enrollment trends are and trying to balance this.
Yes, Ashley.
One more question that popped up in my head. It's again about the grants program director. So if he's inside the high school, is he going to have access to all the students' records like he does at the alternative school? I'm just wondering where his place is. Because I understand him to spend time at the St. John Street with the students there. And if his role is to come over to the high school, is he going to be working with just those kids in the alternative program? Or is it just extended to all the kids?
I think I'm going to defer to Ms. Carlin to talk about the, you're talking about the school violence prevention grant.
I'm talking about the director.
Of the school.
The grants program director that spends an absorbent amount of time in St. John Street. So I just want to know, when he comes to the high school, is he going to come to the high school? Is he going to be a central office? I mean, if this is talked about outside of, as I understand, but.
Well, we can talk about the school violence. This is not related to the budget, but I'll turn this over to Ms. Carlin to talk about the school violence prevention grant briefly.
So that grant covers more than just St. John Street. It covers middle school, the high school and some parts of the elementary schools. So his grant, even though his offices were currently in St. John Street and that was for logistic logistical purposes. His programming, maybe not him always, but his programming is throughout the district. And that would continue no matter where St. John Street, you know, if the students end up at the high school, his program would continue like it is now. It's not, nothing is really going to change. As far as where his office is located, as Dr. Evans mentioned, that's not anything that we've even discussed at this point. It probably would be looked at as logistically, where where is it he's going to be at the most? And where is there space for him? Central office currently has no available space.
Okay, just the reason why I'm asking these questions is because I've I've come to understand that he has access to the group of students he's working with. And I just wanted to be crystal clear on what his role would be on a grander scale if he's going into the high school.
Under FERPA, any educator in the district has access to student records based on the students that they serve.
So he's considered an educator then?
He's an employee of the district.
But he's a grant writer, though.
But he's providing services to students. He's coordinating services for students through a grant.
All right, good?
Okay, the last slide is just the upcoming budget calendar. April 22nd is the deadline for submission of voter initiated propositions and petitions for board candidates. April 23rd is the final legal date for budget adoption by the board of education. May 2nd, the three part budget document will be available upon request and at various locations. May 9th is the budget hearing. And May 21st is the annual meeting and budget vote. Our final budget presentation will be April 16th, where we'll present the final budget for the board to adopt or submission to the voters. And that's it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah. So do you think by April 16th, we'll have an idea of what the governor plans on doing?
That's an outstanding question. We don't, we don't know. The one thing that, you know, I guess in the governor's defense that came to light, I think last week or two weeks ago, was the state found it had about a million, a billion and a half dollars more in revenue than what the governor believed existed when she had to put her budget together. That's a statement of fact. So we don't know how budget negotiations are going to go between the legislature at Albany or the legislature and the governor. We're hopeful, but either way, we're going to have to put some type of placeholder in there as to what we expect state aid to be and have some move, some room to move if it comes in higher or lower.
If it comes in lower, then what?
Well, right now, she's proposed a reduction in total aid of about $217,000 compared to last year. So right now, our plan is to include hold harmless, which is flat. So that would be the the number that we would have to find elsewhere. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for that. Thank it, everybody who put together their budgets for us tonight. We appreciate the input. Moving on from there, we have our consent agenda, Ms. Greco.
I make a motion that we adopt consent agenda F1 to M1 as a group.
Second on that by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Mrs. Greco. Moving on to the, from there, information reports and discussions, board roundtable. Start with Helen.
No report.
Linka.
No report.
Ashley.
I attended a PTO and MSC Chase PTO fundraiser at Cartwright. And it was a great opportunity for parents with kids in chase and also the kids themselves to spend time together and outside of school, outside of sports. I really think it was a great time and I always enjoy those opportunities. So I'm thankful for the Chase PTO for setting that up. It was really a great time.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Riley. Vicki?
I would just like to note that on May 4, St. John's pre-K, we'll be having a talk of a bingo. Those who'd like to attend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Groden.
I had the pleasure of attending the Capitol Project meeting. And I don't usually wear my hat indoors, but when I do, it's because it's Monty's gear. And I have to let everybody know that I am so looking forward to. If anybody didn't hear me earlier and want to speak up, I am so looking forward to getting turf on our football field, extending our track from six to eight lanes, to getting a media center to call out said games, a LED board, outside speakers. We're going to be someplace. And that enrollment, I am so looking forward to that trend instead of decreasing. I'm looking at that thing go exponentially increasing and getting, attracting more athletes here who will also score better and that we can change our policy back. I am so looking forward to this. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Groden. Adriana?
It was last week, I attended the Bellevan County School Force Meeting with Sullivan Bozey's. And some of the things that were discussed, Wendy was there as well, but she can't be here tonight. There was looking forward already to the annual conference. That'll be in New York City this year, the idea of grouping together to get transportation. As both each of us have 5,000 cars to try to park for lots of money in New York City, maybe rent a bus and share that cost against several school districts. So I just wanted to bring that to the group so we can start to marinate on that. It is far out, it is October, but that was one of the things that was brought forth. There is an assembly bill that was discussed, A447, regarding the change in timeline for electric buses that was discussed. And that is currently being discussed in the assembly and that was discussed during the meeting. And then just further issues and concerns about the electronic buses, what it means, how they serve us and things of that nature. And just making sure that we think about how the changes in the required bus types may affect our school district and in particularly for us, the length of our runs over the course of time. And so I just wanted to, that was some of the things discussed. And there is a presentation in May, and I did not write down the exact date, but I have an email, so I'll send it to Tim to send out or Janet. To send it to Janet, to send it out to the board. Just someone will be actually doing a presentation about electronic buses and their use in school districts in May for their main meeting. And that would be hosted at Elder Central School District. Details forthcoming, but just if you're interested, May 23rd, to get that on your calendars for that particular night. And those were the issues and concerns shared at the meeting.
Mrs. Greco. I also attended Capitol Project Committee with Mr. Jersey and Mr. Groden. I believe Jen made that. And excited for our roll call vote later on. Dr. Evans did share with me that we got our new electric bus on hand. Was that on the website?
Not yet, but we are planning for an unveiling or christening. I don't know what you call them with an electric bus. I do know you do not touch the orange cables.
But we did receive the the electric bus that we got through a grant that Robin had applied for. And we do have a charging station installed for it. So we can actually start testing that unit out to see what it can actually do for us. So that'll be very interesting. Thank you, everybody, for your report out. We, at this meeting, have our director reports. Any questions, comments or concerns regarding them?
I do. The school-based mental health clinic, when is that going to happen?
It should happen by the beginning of next year. We're still waiting at this point for the Office of Mental Health to actually approve the two. the two different locations, one at St. John Street.
When the school year starts, that should be in place? Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the director reports? Thank you very much, everybody. Policy committee memo. I don't think we have any heavy content at this point.
No, we do have, and I want to give a shout out to Ms. Hurley and Ms. Seymour, who invited me in to talk for their participation in government class. I see some of those students here tonight. We are doing first reads on seven policies. All of those come from recommended, recommendations from the New York State School Boards Association, and they're really just keeping current with new commissioners' regulations, new court rulings, and other new laws.
Questions, comments, or concerns regarding policy? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Correspondence outcomes are listed on your agenda. Capital Project update, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So first, you know, kind of on the bold project, if you will, we'll be doing a grand opening of the tennis courts at the boys' first tennis match, which will be on Wednesday, April 10th. The match starts at 5:00 PM. We'll be doing the ribbon cutting at 4:45 PM. Certainly, every board member and every member of the community is invited. And I did hear from Coach DeCervo, using his words, "The new tennis courts are awesome." Straight from him. Relative to tonight's Capital Project, well, before I get there, we did finish the RFP for construction managers, and we will need to have a, we would like to have a meeting of the Capital Project Committee to review and act on those RFPs. I don't have dates in front of me, but I can send the group some, some possible dates and times. Now, tonight, the Board of Education will be considering a, a resolution first to accept the state environmental quality, environmental quality review that was done in preparation for a capital improvement project. You have the results of the seeker, there were basically no findings in there. And then, right after that, there would be a roll call vote on a proposed Capital Project resolution at the May 21st budget vote. So you had a pretty detailed report, I think at the last meeting from BBS, or maybe the meeting prior to that, on the project. This is a $31.8 million project. It includes almost everything that was presented last time. However, the Capital Project Committee did take into account some of the feedback that we received at our focus group meetings, particularly around parking and student safety, walkways at the high school. And though we can't really expand parking an awful lot, we did include in here a walkway that would connect kind of the lower parking by the bus garage up to, let's say, the gymnasium of the high school. That way, that would take pedestrian traffic out of that, that loop. So that's kind of a new piece in there. We are still hoping to do a new faculty bathroom at the high school, but that is, you know, right now, kind of on a tentative B-list, depending on what resources would be remaining at the end of the project. But that is something that we would like to do. So some might be asking, so how much is all this going to cost? And just a reminder, and I know the board knows this, but we do have a lot of members of the community here tonight. So the overall cost of the project is $31.8 million. $14 million of that are currently in capital reserves that the voters approved, one of them about 10 years ago, another about five years ago. So four million of those reserves expire in 2025, the remaining 10 million expire in 2029. So the board budget, Board Capital Project Committee has elected to set all of those monies towards this project, and then we would bond the rest over a 15-year period. And according to our bond council, and, or, excuse me, according to our fiscal advisors, what that would translate into is new, a new budget expenditure of $102,000 in year one. That would translate into an increase on a homeowner's taxes of 2.4 cents per thousand dollars of full assessed value. Or, you know, giving an example, if one owned a $250,000 house, that would be approximately a $6 increase on their taxes. So that bond would be over a period of 15 years for this proposed project.
Victoria?
I just have a quick question. What is the interest rate?
Fiscal advisors use an average that's from bonds and serial bonds that they're putting out now statewide, and what that rate's coming in at, it's estimated. We won't know the interest rate until we actually go to bond. So that's really an estimate.
What's the estimate, right now? I don't know if he put it out there. Maybe I missed it. Yeah.
No, he didn't put it out there. We can seek that from him.
I can find out somewhere.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the Capital Project update? Okay, upcoming events are listed on your agenda. Kind of dovetailing into what Mrs. Russo and Mrs. Riley had said, there's also an RJK MSPTO fun run event coming up on April 13th. So anybody that would be available to help support the middle school PTO would be fantastic. And then there's also a lot of budget stuff in there in our meetings. Community events, a lot of articles pertaining to the district and the great things going on there as well. Questions and comments from the public? Janet, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we have four people that would like to speak. Victor.
I just have to read my thing. "Board of Education recognizes value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, the following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note, the first public comment period of 45 minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of 15 minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, and/or address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comment. Prior to making your comment, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his/her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in his/her comments. All comments should be directed to the board president or designate. Endouts and end or petitions are to be given only to the board president. For distribution to the board, the board will receive and consider all written comments. Memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under Information Reports and Discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. Will be titled 'Correspondence Outcomes,' and will be a public document."
First person is Kayla Foster.
So I need to state my main purpose and the organization I represent, correct? I couldn't hear it very well.
Nope, you got it.
Okay, all right. My name is Kayla Foster. I represent the St. John Street High School teachers and staff, and my purpose is to discuss the future of our program. I've been a member of the Sullivan County community my whole life, and this is my second year working with the Monticello School District. I, along with my colleagues, am here to advocate and shed light on concerns for the future of our program. As an educator and community member, it is common knowledge that many of our young adults in Sullivan County leave once receiving a college education. Arguably, there is beneficent exodus. The reason I came back after receiving my education was to make it a place to want to come back to. During my short time as an educator, every professional development, every message ingrained into education is to remember and work for our why. Why we became educators, why we teach, why we work with students. From the moment I stepped through the doors of St. John Street, I found my why. It was clear to me that this program was about more than teaching. Educating students is what we do, but caring for people is why we're here. We provide a level of support for students in and out of the classroom that is unprecedented. Our students at St. John Street require a small learning environment, not only to learn, but to be supported in their lives where society and systems have failed them. The need for this program is the need for support in a neighborhood that has limited if no place for our students to be successful with their experiences and backgrounds. This program is the future of education Monticello should be a part of. It's the equity that aligns with the Monticello School District's mission. We have many current and future, future students and families who don't want this program, they need this program. We've had multiple parents and students who have said they don't know where their family or themselves would be if they weren't offered a place at St. John Street. I understand the implications of finances that they have on education. It's a tale as old as time. When funds are cut, extras and additional programs are the first to go. I'm here to state that the St. John Street community is not an extra. It's the moral foundation of making sure every student gets the education they deserve. I'll end my statement with this thought for the board and the community. A friend once sent me a quote by Maya Angelou that states, "If it is true that a chain is only as strong as its weakest link, isn't it also true a society is only as healthy as its sickest citizen and only as wealthy as its most deprived?" I believe this quote encompasses our community at St. John Street. If our students most in need of individualized programs are told their education is no longer important to the district, what message are we sending to our students and educators? What value are we giving to our students most in need of a place to belong and succeed? What incentive is there to come back to serve a community they feel hasn't given them the chance they need? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, David.
Before Mr. Walden speaks, if I could ask any of the speakers, if you do have copies of these, if you could please email them to me tomorrow. Bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Philip Walden, and I'm also here to represent the St. John Street staff and teachers of the Alternative High School. I'm an alumnus of Monticello High and a first-year teacher here in the Monticello School District. It is only my second year teaching in general. I'm up here today to advocate, along with my other colleagues in attendance, for the continuation of the St. John Street Alternative High School. When entering this program, we were worried. We were worried that we would be working with students who would not listen, who would be violent. We were worried we'd be struggling to manage a safe and calm classroom environment. Now, we are ashamed that we had those thoughts in the first place. What is even more sobering is that many of my loved ones and former colleagues were worried for me for these same reasons. These perceptions that I have to share with you have hurt our students in the past, and they continue to follow them now. They could not be further from the truth. Our students are dedicated, they look out for each other. Our students have dreams that they have shared with us in painstaking detail, and they are working hard to turn their aspirations into reality. Our students aren't called to the world, they've been deprived by it. They aren't looking for a way to get back to society, they aren't looking a way to fight society. Our students are looking for a way to rise above those same core perceptions of them that we once believed. St. John Street has granted our students the space and the voices they need to avoid falling into the trap that so many kids have had before. SJS works to make sure that our students who struggled in traditional classrooms are given the fair chance that they deserve. It's not a slight on the traditional high school or its staff and the incredible job that they do every day. Our students have just proven that they thrive in a smaller classroom with less people and two teachers who can afford the time to support them individually. Our program places great focus on social-emotional learning. When students learn the ability to effectively self-regulate their emotions, we are setting them up for a successful future, and that is a goal of this district. What I now worry about is that if St. John closes, our students will be made into those perceptions and stereotypes that people had of them in the first place. And hundreds that could have been helped in the future will now fall by the wayside. Closing St. John Street is denying future generations an education. Recently, I held a vote with my students to put a quote on the back of our classroom wall, and the students chose this quote by Angela Davis. "I'm no longer accepting the things I cannot change, I'm changing the things I cannot accept." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Annette Rasmussen. I am a social worker at the high school. I am also the department instructional lead for the social workers and the school psychologists. And I'm here to support the PPS budget proposal and to further explain the necessity of resources for our students experiencing significant emotional, behavioral, and mental health issues. The PPS budget has increased. I'm here because I want to highlight why we think it's increased. There's not only been an increase in students requiring special education services, but the behavioral and mental health needs of our students has increased drastically. And we are very limited in Sullivan County in terms of outside providers and resources. There are wait lists of up to a year for a student to see a therapist. The clinical staff caseloads have doubled. Our general education student population and the crisis intervention is another dynamic that we are addressing as best as we can. We exhaust all resources that we have, and unfortunately, we have no choice to send our students out of the district at times. Unfortunately, our partners at Sullivan County Bosie's have not been able to accept our students, all of our students, but we are forced to send our students to other counties, which increases the cost of out-of-districts, out-of-district student needs, increases our transportation needs. Students are on the bus sometimes for two hours each way. This puts a toll on our district financially, not to mention the toll that it takes on our students and their families. I'm a former board member of a neighboring district, so I understand the position that you guys are in when it comes to budgets and making decisions. However, I'm also aware that you're not always made aware of all the information, you're not in the buildings. And it's difficult to understand what's actually going on in the buildings and when you have to increase budgets. As board members, you hear key terms like discipline, academics, social-emotional learning, equity, social climate of the buildings. But the needs are not being met. We don't have the resources, so we have to increase our budgets. We're fortunate here at Monticello because we have staff that care, they're invested. Our teachers, our counselors, social workers, psychologists, support staff do whatever they can to help students at any time. They give up free periods, they stay after school. There are just not enough hours in the day to address all the students' social-emotional needs. So we have to send these students to specialized programs to address their needs. We need to support our, our students in our district. We have to provide special education, speech, hearing services, vision services for students that are blind, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and home instruction. So I'm here tonight asking you to please support the PPS department budget so that we can continue, continue to effectively address the mental health and special education needs of our community as they, as their needs continue to increase. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my, my name is Vincent Bolduk. I'm head of the math department here in the high school, but today I'll be speaking on the behalf of Thomas Ventry, who is the math teacher over at St. John Street. Over the course of the past two years, the St. John Street's alternative program has not just been a success for this district, but an overwhelming positive for each student that has been involved. Despite the district looking for areas to cut budgets, I would like to talk about reasons this program should not be one of them. As a math teacher, I'm going to take a numbers approach. First, let's look at the students' success at St. John Street over the past two years. Last year, we had 11 graduating seniors and all 11 graduated. This year, we have seven seniors and six of them are on pace to graduate. If you take that average of 17 out of 18 students graduating, this program will produce a 94% graduation rate, which I think we can all agree is an overwhelming success. We also expect that in the coming years, as our sophomores and juniors move up, they will be likely, they will be more likely to graduate on time using our academic rehabilitation system. Next, let's talk about the overall budget. Next, let's talk about the overall budget. The operating cost of St. John Street program, using an overestimation, the expense is $800,000. Now, if we take the entire district $96 million budget, St. John Street comes out to be 0.83% of the district budget. I understand that this is not a small amount. However, if we consider the number of students that we have, 25 in total students in district out of 22,300, St. John Street has nearly 1.1% of students. So we have a larger percentage of students versus the budget, the percent of budget we use. Sometimes, numbers aren't enough. So I want to talk about one aspect I think is our biggest success, the fact that other districts are copying our program. There are districts in Orange County duplicating our efforts, creating an exact replica of the joint pre-K and alt-ed model. This speaks to the incredible teamwork that the two programs have, highlighted by the several events we have our high school students and pre-K students both part of. This speaks to the creativity and innovations of our program and district and sets the standard, not just for Sullivan County, but districts across the region. We constantly talk about being a district that puts the students first and having a mission of being a district of choice. Then the only choice we, choice would be to keep the St. John Street alternative program intact. Thank you. Bye, Thomas Ventry.
Thank you, everybody, for coming up and speaking today. We appreciate it and appreciate your time for coming in this evening. Superintendent, update and information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Kremly. Just a few things, as I've spoken a lot already tonight. I want to take a moment to recognize, I don't know if he's here, Matthew Forge, who the board will be appointing to area. Welcome, Mr. Forge. Forge will be joining us as a business teacher. So welcome aboard, Mr. Forge. And just a response to, well, for the whole board and your question, Ms. Russo, on the interest rates. Ms. Bayler did remind me that fiscal advisors will be here to present to the board at the April 16 meeting. So we'll make sure that that question gets forwarded to them so they can talk about it. Just a few minor things. The board will be acting on a recommendation for a merger of the boys tennis team with Liberty. Both the Liberty Boys tennis team and our tennis team could stand to take on a few more players, so you will see some merger paperwork in there. As was mentioned earlier, we are the recipients of an electric bus. It is in our parking lot. It is being charged. I don't know if it's being used quite yet. However, we are looking to try it on. And I'll have more information for the board on when we'll officially, I guess, christen that. I shared with the board a few things from Albany relative to, let's say, education and not money. The first is a proposed amendment from the commissioner being considered by the Board of Regents. And I know the board has asked questions about this before, and that's why I want to highlight it. This change would require schools to annually notify students and parents by June 1 of each school year of the benefits and opportunities of participating in advanced coursework within that school district. So right now, it appears that the Board of Regents will act on that over the summer, and the changes would become effective by July 31, 2024, if the Board of Regents adopts it. We'll be following it closely to see what the next steps would be after that. A calendar update, and we'll be making this official after I speak it, but it will be sent to parents and community members tomorrow. We will have a give-back day next Thursday, March 28, because we have three snow days remaining. So we'll be using one of them as a give-back next Thursday, so that's treated as like a snow day. No students and staff on that day, and then we roll into spring break, which is from March 29 through April 7. Students and staff return on April 8 in time for the solar eclipse that afternoon. We are preparing our elementary students and staff with viewing glasses as well as parent, notes to parents and caregivers about whether they want to opt their children out of viewing that afternoon. So the, it's not a complete totality, but around 3:25 PM, the eclipse will peak here. We will be encouraging staff and students to go outside and watch it with glasses that we've already ordered and we have on hand. However, parents can opt out their children, and they can stay inside, and we'll be showing it to them remotely on a livestream. Okay, so we want to make sure that that learning opportunity is available to our students. We are also, I know Mr. Jasper's here, you might not want to hear it, but we are also considering canceling after-school activities that day. I'll say we don't have lights to light up our ball fields. Does that work, Mr. Jasper? So we are considering that, but nothing official yet. I will be having superintendent office hours on Monday from 2:30 to 4:00 PM as we have a budget committee meeting at 4:00 PM in the district office. I believe that's Ms. Jersey, Ms. Riley, Mr. Kremly, and Mr. Groton, if I recall. And last but not least, we got late word yesterday that the Educational Conference Board has, Educational Conference Board and the State Education Department have issued a joint bill, I guess that's technically what it is, to the state legislature to amend the 3012D APPR law. I've shared with the board kind of a press release on that, but basically what it would do is give a lot more local control to school districts and collective bargaining units to determine the elements of teacher and principal evaluations. One significant change would be to remove the student testing factor in coming up with those, those annual findings, ratings for teachers and principals. So it's not law yet. However, my understanding is that last year, the legislature kind of put it off because they felt that the Conference Board and the State Education Department were on the same page. So this year, it appears that they are. The Conference Board, just so you're aware, consists of the different associations. So you have NICE, the New York State United Teachers, NISBA, NISCUS, SAENES, the PTO. They're all kind of one board that works together for these types of issues. So we're optimistic that that will bring about some changes. That's all I have.
Dr. Evans, any questions for our superintendent? Moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Business, update and information, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Kremly. This evening, you have your budget status and revenue status, claims auditor, and school entrepreneurship laws offered in January. I'm asking the board to approve the CEPR for the Smart Schools Bond Act. Last spring, we had a presentation. We got notified a couple of weeks ago that the committee has approved our application, so it's moving forward to facilities planning for approval, and we need to do the CEPR before that can go up to state end. And as Dr. Evans mentioned earlier, we set out on RFP for construction management services for the upcoming proposed project. We received four responses. Schoolhouse Construction Services, Calvi Construction Company, Troyton Construction Company, and CNS Companies. And they're pretty much from all over, Binghamton, Delhi, White Plains, and the city. We need to, in the RFP, there wasn't a specific timeline for that, so the building committee could review them. You can ask for them to come in and make presentations to you, to the whole board, however you want to do it. My recommendation would be to have in place an appointment of construction manager in June, and then we can go right into what we need to do. And that's all I have.
And at some point before spring break, you'll send out a consensus to put together.
Yes, yeah, we'll get that on the calendar next week.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Bayler? Moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, President Kremly. Good evening. I'm going to use my teacher voice and not try to work with these speakers. Before I get into the contracts that we have on here for tonight, I just wanted to give you some updates. Last board meeting, Keith Petsinger was here to present to you the fine arts budget, and one of the questions that had come up, why, it was why there was a reduction in some of our conference fees for students. So we did get some more information on that. We currently have in the budget about $4,800 to fund that, but we were going to reduce it next year to about $1,450, and the reason was because those fees were just not being used. The concern was, does that mean that less students are going to some of these activities? And so I did get some, some data for you, and in fact, that there are not less students. But just to give you some data over the last few years, you had asked for five years. In 2020, unfortunately, due to COVID, the Solo Fest was canceled before kids were able to register because of COVID. And again, this has to do with NISMA Solo Fest. In 21, eight students used the online through uploading videos. There was not an in-person NISMA Solo Festival. In 2022, there were 19 students who participated. As we were coming out of COVID, 23, 46 students participated. And this year, we're anticipating that 60 students will participate. So in fact, our numbers are going up since 2020. And again, we mentioned that those COVID years, it's hard to kind of, to use that as a comparison, but those are the numbers we have. We are missing orchestra numbers from '21 and '22, since those teachers are no longer in the district, and we were not able to get that data. So I believe that answered your question on that, but if you have other questions, I can, I can take those back and get some information for you. Next, I just kind of wanted to mention, we're going to have code of conduct meetings starting soon. I know there were some board members that were on the Code of Conduct Committee last year. I wanted to open that up to anyone who is still interested in being on that committee or who would like to join that committee, you know, now that we are starting it back up again. So Taki Ma Killins, our Director of Student Support, will be chairing that committee, and she will be sending out some information. So if you are interested, please either let Dr. Evans know or let myself know, and we can make sure you're included. And then last, before I talk about the contracts, actually, no, I'm going to go right into the contracts. So I have three contracts on for your approval. One is a private school contract that you've seen in the past, so it is an instructor that they are bringing on board. The other are two consultant contracts. I'll start with Red Cardinal Consulting. Red Cardinal Consulting, we've been using this year to work on teaching practice and instructional practice in the classroom. Our instructional coaches at the elementary level have been doing a lot of work around their role and how they can get teachers to be better at tier-one instruction, because right now, we feel that that is the area that needs the most work. So they have been working really hard to get that. And so this contract is for next school year, so we are going to continue that work with Red Cardinal Consulting. And then the second, or the next contract, the last one on the, on the agenda, is MEA Consulting, and actually, that's Duncan Kirkwood, if you're familiar with that name. He has been coming in in the past and currently this school year, and so he's going to continue to come in. That is paid for entirely through the School Violence Prevention Program and grant. And so that is a consulting agreement for him to come in and do some student work between now and the end of the school year. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Questions for Ms. Kremly.
Last meeting, when we did the high school budget, we had talked briefly about the PSAT and the SAT, and we're going to go back and get some additional information as to when it's given, what are.
Yeah, and the schools put out announcements to that effect. There are SATs coming up this spring. PSATs are usually given in the fall, so that PSAT, PSAT window has closed, unfortunately. However, I know that the school has been putting out information relative to, we've got SAT in May and SAT in June. It is on the website, and I believe it also has been pushed out on Parent Square.
So are we looking into any, so we're not giving the PSAT in 10th grade?
We will be in the fall.
For 10th graders or 11th graders?
10th graders.
Are we sure about that?
Yes.
The email I received is 11th grade.
That may have been for SATs.
Nope, PSAT.
Okay, they will look at that.
Because I know there's a PSAT 10. I don't know, because we're looking to give, looked into giving that, or SATs in October. I'm just kind of concerned that, you know, kids need the testing and in order to, we keep talking about content curriculum and being career-ready and being college-ready, and I think that the more we can do for our students, that the more practice they get is the better that they'll be off.
So the PSAT, we'll admit, was not advertised to the extent it probably could have been last fall. We are taking steps to make sure that the SATs this spring are promoted, and students are encouraged to do it, and we'll be doing the same for the PSATs, the 10th graders in the fall of the upcoming year. SATs also get given throughout the year, so there will be an SAT in the fall that will also be promoted, and then we'll be back in the cycle and continue this next spring.
So in October this coming year, the SAT for 10th graders.
Correct.
What are juniors doing?
We could look to see if they're able to take that. However, they would be taking typically the SAT in the fall. So I suppose it's conceivable they could do the PSNT in October and then the SAT in November. I don't know if that's the best strategy to use. However, we could look into that.
I'm just concerned as the current 10th grade students have been, most of them have been left out at this point, because they were not offered it.
The PSAT.
Correct.
Correct.
So now we're going to go right into an SAT.
Sure.
So is there any review classes? Is there anything going to go on to assist them in doing this?
We can get you more information.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you for going over the two consulting groups, because I did have them marked. I remember the Red Cardinal from before, especially when I saw the Binghamton. So I appreciate you explaining that.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
And I also remember Duncan Kirkwood, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments regarding curriculum and instruction? All right, moving on. Greco.
A motion that we take items T1 through T17 and T19 as a group.
We have a second by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
A motion that we approve action items T1 through T17 and T19 as a group.
I have a second by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
A motion that we approve action item T18 as a roll call.
We have a second on that by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
So when you say roll call, we're going to approve this without having like the interest rate? Like, I mean, I have a question about the interest rate. Do we approve this first?
So you have the payment schedule.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
They don't know what the bond, the interest rate will be, because they don't, they're kind of doing an amalgam of what their best guesses are.
So we're not going to get an exact number? Not until we actually bond it, which might very well be for another year and a half to two years? They're, they're doing a general, this is historically what it's been, this is what we're seeing, and they have to come up with something. That's what they come up with. But we very well might not know that exact interest rate for 18 to 24 months. The other discuss. This is to get it onto the ballot.
Yeah, can I? Five, one sec. It's also to make sure that we don't miss on a building cycle in order to put this up.
Any other question? Janet.
Ms. Kremly?
Aye.
Todd Groden?
Yes.
Helen Jersey?
Yes.
Victoria LaRusso? Adriana Mason-Greco?
Yes.
Ashley Riley?
Yes.
Linka Rivera?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Janet. Moving on from there, we have closing of meeting. Of course, what?
T19? I did that with the first.
That was part of the group.
Okay, with the first one, okay.
Yep. Correspondents are listed. Actually, there's none listed at this time. Questions and comments from the public?
No addition.
No addition. The board is going to recess back into executive session. There will be no other further actions. We're going back to executive session for discussion of personnel and contractual obligations that we have, but there will be no further actionable items taken care of this evening. So before I actually call us into executive session, is there any students here that need their stuff signed off? Please come on up and get your stuff done. Motion to move into executive session by Mrs. Greco, seconded by. Motion to move into executive session by Mrs. Greco, seconded by Mrs.